I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll take a brief pause to allow Commissioner White to come to the dais.
Where do I sit?
Okay. And for tonight's meeting, we will be... We will be selecting officers for the 2016 calendar year and swearing in those commissioners who have recently been elected to the board. So let's begin with the swearing in of the newly elected commissioners. And I will call upon first Commissioner-elect... Commissioner-elect Adams to come to the podium to be sworn in, please.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Commissioner of Education of the Rochester City School District.
Of the Office of the Commissioner of Education of the Rochester City School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And next, we'll have Commissioner Evans to come to the podium to be sworn in. Yes, he does. Write this.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Commissioner of Education.
Of the Office of Commissioner of Education.
Of the Rochester City School District.
Of the Rochester City School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
I do solemnly affirm that I will...
Support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Commissioner of Education.
Of the Officer of Commissioner of Education.
Of the Rochester City School District.
Of the Rochester City School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
And the final swearing will be for Commissioner Powell. Please come to the podium to be sworn in.
I will, Powell.
I will, Powell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Commissioner of the Board of Education.
Of the Office Commissioner of Board of Education.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, and next is the election of officers for the 2016 calendar year. The floor is now open for nominations for the Office of President for 2016.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to put the name of Van White as President. I think Van has provided us with some exceptional leadership for this year. A lot of the... some of the initiatives that he has brought to the board for its consideration. And so, Madam Clerk, I would offer wholeheartedly the nomination for Van White as President.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Clerk, I would... it would be my honor to second that nomination.
And are there any other nominations for the Office of President for the 2016 calendar year?
Motion to close nominations.
And is there a second?
Second.
The floor is now open for any discussion on the... for the nomination for the Office of President for the 2016 calendar year.
Just let me say, Madam Clerk, Van White, I believe, has done an excellent job these last few years as President. Having served as President for a long time of this board, I am very familiar of the energy and time it takes, particularly away from your family, and the... just the burden that you have to take to work with six very different individuals. It's not an easy task, and I think Van has done that admirably. And I always tell him, make sure you slow down a little bit, take care of yourself. And I look forward to working with him again in this upcoming school year.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, Commissioner Adams?
Yep, I would just like to add my support and appreciate the work that's been done, echoing Commissioner Evans' appreciation of what it takes not just to work with six individuals, but, you know, across the community and across the district. I really, you know, it's a rare... it's a rare set of qualities that can... that can hold the kind of dignity and honor and, you know, sincerity in order to move the kinds of issues and take us forward in the ways that I've seen you do. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion for the nomination for the Office of President? Can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay, and I will now take a roll call vote for the Office of President for the 2016 calendar year with Commissioner White being the only nomination for the office. I will begin with Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
And Evans.
Yes.
And Hallmark.
Yes.
And Powell.
Yes.
And White. Is that a no?
No.
Okay. Will Commissioner White please come forward to be sworn in to the Office of President for the 2016 calendar year?
Just so that you all know, I... my wife is here. Bridget, could you come hold the Bible? Because the person swearing me in is here, but not here. This is my wife. Bridget, could you all give her a round of applause? She didn't know she was gonna have to do this, but just let me provide a little context. The gentleman you see on the screen is Charles "Teddy" Pierre. I was very blessed and honored to represent him this last year, and I can think of no one better... and I'm going to hopefully perfectly make some comments in a few moments. I could really think of no one better to swear me in. Teddy is actually in his native country of Trinidad, where he is now living as a free man. And this is actually the first time I've seen him live since he left on that plane for Trinidad. So it's good to see you, Teddy. I think he's got the script, and he's gonna swear me in as my wife holds the Bible. Go ahead, Teddy.
I'm Henry Teddy. Hi, Van.
Hi, Van, Harry White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the bylaws and policies of the Education.
And the bylaws and the policies.
Of the Board.
Of the Board of Education. Of New York.
The Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully...
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of the President.
Of the Office of the President.
Of the Office of the President.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
Of the Rochester City School District.
Rochester City School District.
Of... according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you. And we will now continue with the election of officers for the 2016 calendar year. The floor is now open for nominations for the Office of Vice President.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Elliott as Vice President. I'll keep it short, which is almost impossible for me to do, especially when talking about Commissioner Elliott. She has served ably as Vice President, serving as a voice for so many issues that I think would not have been addressed, and she was doing this long before she became Vice President. But in addition, I... on a personal note, which is part of the reason why I'm making this nomination, she and I have traveled quite a journey, and I gotta tell you, if anybody's been witnessing the Board of Education and its evolution, you would be proud of Commissioner Elliott, as I am proud of her, and I'm even more proud of our relationship. I cannot think of another situation in my life where I've had the opportunity to travel so far with a person. And where I'm at right now, I have the utmost respect and promise about our ability to continue to provide the kind of leadership and guidance that this district needs. So nomination aside, thank you, Commissioner Elliott, for being there for me the entire journey and looking forward to the rest of it.
Thank you. Is there a second to the nomination?
I'll second the nomination, and I'll just say that it's been a pleasure working with Commissioner Elliott as Vice President, particularly for the work that she does with the district, but more importantly, for the work she does in this community. Extremely committed to the families of this district. I mean, I have visited families with Cynthia over the years, schools with Cynthia, and Commissioner Elliott is just very committed to the families in this... in this city. And also, from a legislative perspective, she has really rejuvenated our legislative area as it relates to our community and the Government Relations Committee and the work that we are doing at the federal, state, and local levels.
Thank you. And are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President?
Motion to close nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any further discussion on the office... on the nomination for the Office of Vice President?
Madam Clerk, President White's remarks regarding the journey ring true with my relationship with Commissioner Elliott as well. There were open hostilities not too many years ago, right? And it should be a matter of record that Cynthia and I went to church together on two occasions this year, the most recent being only 15 days ago when she came to visit mine. And so, if there is a better example of how far we've traveled, I don't know it. And so, welcome aboard, Cynthia.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion regarding the nomination? Okay, and may I... I have a motion to close.
Motion to close, Madam Clerk.
Is there a second? And I will now take a roll call vote for the Office of Vice President for the 2016 calendar year with one nomination for Commissioner Elliott for the office. I will begin with Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
And Cruz.
Yes.
And Elliott.
Yes.
And Evans.
Yes.
And Hallmark.
Yes.
And Powell.
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
With a vote of seven to zero, Commissioner Elliott has... excuse me... should come forward to be sworn in as Vice President for the 2016 calendar year.
I think we're gonna have an opportunity to say some words after the roll call ends, but I also want to just thank these lovely women here. These are my sisters. This is my younger sister, and this is my big sister here. So they're both going to be swearing me in. And last year was my niece who swore me in, and so I wanted these women, because these women have been such a strong support system for me. And as this sister says, that we're her studders, because she's the baby, they certainly are commissioners in our audience. My studders and my support system, and I really do appreciate them, and that's why I want to be honored by them to swear me in.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the Office of Vice President of the... Of the Office of Vice President. Of the Board of Education. Of the Board of Education. Of the Rochester City School District. Of the Rochester City School District. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Let me just take a moment and thank everybody who has come out. This really is a big crowd for us in these organizational meetings. I'd like to thank... I think the mayor is still here. I'd like to thank her for coming out. I'd like to thank Ernest Flagler, who's here, Vince Felder, who have been reelected to county legislature. I see Cindy Kaylee, and I see Lain Sproul there, and so if I'm missing anybody, please forgive me. But most important, I want to also thank my family for coming out and supporting me. As I said about my sisters, I've always had just carte blanche support from my family, who really put me on a pedestal, and I don't take that lightly. But I want to also thank the members here, who I work with sometimes hours, 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 sometimes until the next morning that we're here working. And as was stated earlier by President White and Commissioner Powell, we absolutely have come a long way. And I like to say to people, you know, I started off in this business as an activist. And so what you do is you tend to bring over your activism role as opposed to a policymaking role. And so you have to learn how to come from being an activist to being a policymaker. Now, don't get it twisted. I'm still an activist at heart. But I've learned to be able to work in a way in which we're able to get some things accomplished on behalf of the children and the families of this community. I also like to just welcome and thank Superintendent Laurengard, who is our interim superintendent until we're able to identify a permanent superintendent. I'm so looking forward to working with Superintendent Laurengard. He has done some amazing things in Syracuse, and so I'm looking forward to him to help us to position us on the road to success, because I vow to you, I believe with all my heart, my vision is that we educate every child in this district, and I believe that we can do that. And so, to you, President White, I'm looking forward to continuing this relationship. You have brought us a long way as a board, and I'm looking to continue to support you in the position of President. And for all of my colleagues here, we've got work to do. God bless you. And thank you so very much. I appreciate the support and the vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Before we continue on with the business, I too want to make a few remarks. First of all, I want to thank the members of our county legislature. Oh, she's handing me the gavel, which I think I've only used once in two years. So hopefully, in my third year, I won't have to use it at all. But I want to begin by thanking members of the county ledge that are here. I want to thank members of the city council that are here. It's much appreciated. I know your days are filled as well with other responsibilities. And for you to have taken the time out to just come here, to not even think about being recognized, but just to come here and support us, it is really appreciated, because I know how many commitments you have. And to Mayor Warren, if I can call you out by name, I see you sort of leaning back, and nobody can really see you. But we do appreciate your presence here today. You two are tremendously busy, and we realize that for you to come here today is a show of your appreciation for the work that we do. But I want to communicate on behalf of the board, we appreciate the work that you do. And if everybody could just give her a round of applause. It's a tough job. And of course, that applause will be communicated to all the good folks at City Hall, City Council, County Ledge. We do appreciate the good work that you all do. The other thing I wanted to do is thank my wife. I gotta begin with Bridget. She... and what I'm about to say, I think, applies to everybody in this room, because all of us have family members. So Bridget, please accept these comments, not only directly to you, but to all the family members who make tremendous sacrifices for not only elected officials here, but the elected officials in the county, in the city, and in the state. You all just really do not know, you family members, how thankful we are, because to come home and not necessarily feel the guilt of being out until 11 o'clock, 11:30, to go to meeting after meeting, you really do not know, and Bridget, I'm looking at you, how much it is appreciated. And I want you to know that you have my eternal thanks. And when she said, "for bad or for worse," or whatever, "good or for bad," whatever, I mean, she really is holding her own to that commitment. And I say, to all the spouses out there and the children out there, we do really appreciate. And I'm with these guys at these late meetings, and I know how they're all talking about, "I gotta get home," or, you know, "she's calling me," or "he's texting me," or "he's waiting out in the car in the front," right? Really. And to Liz's husband, just get ready. So brace yourself. So we're letting you know in advance, we appreciate you, and you have our thanks. To the rest of my family, my mother, who may be watching, who's 85 years old, praise God. My siblings, my son, who is there. I know they don't... they live in these separate worlds. They don't want these two worlds to collide. But my son is always there. He's back there now. Brandon, I want to thank you and his wife, his wonderful wife, and my daughter, Ava, who is probably doing something right now, dancing or playing the piano or doing something. And my middle one, who is in Peru, in the Peace Corps. Both Brandon and Brittany are proud graduates of the Rochester School District, and my middle one is in Peru right now, and she actually might be watching on the internet. So thank you for your love and support. Third, I want to thank Dan and his wife, who's not here today. But again, the same rationale applies. Tremendous sacrifices are made by people who love us, because they know we love this work of public service. To the rest of the central office staff and those folks throughout the district, thank you for your commitment to the children and families of this district. Many of those folks are represented by members of the collective bargaining units that makes tremendous sacrifices as well, just like we do. I see Adam back there. I might be... my eyes aren't what they used to be, but I want to thank them for the same reason that I thank my colleagues up here for the sacrifices that you make. It's appreciated. And I would appreciate it if you're a member of the collective bargaining units, you share with those folks that we appreciate the good work that you do for our city. Fourth, I want to thank members of my extended family. Charles "Teddy" Pierre is that person. I think he has his cousin with him. Teddy's got a big smile on his face. And I know Teddy would not be upset if I said, "Is that Michelle?" Is that Michelle? Is that cousin Michelle? Michelle, I gotta tell you, has been a real angel. Teddy was in prison for 18 years, and so he wasn't up on the most recent social media tools. And Michelle has helped him get used to Facebook and Twitter, and we really appreciate that. And I want to say, and I don't think Teddy would be upset, Michelle is helping out, because not only did the criminal justice system fail Teddy, but his educational system failed him too. So he needed a little support in reading the oath of office. But Teddy is the perfect example of what it takes to succeed notwithstanding challenges that confront us. And as I said earlier, I could not think of a better person to swear me in today, because it took courage, it took commitment, and it took, quite frankly, creativity for Teddy to survive those 14 years in Attica. And we would all do well, I think, to emulate, to copy Teddy as an individual. So Teddy, you have not gotten any awards, but your award is going to be in heaven, and your recognition of who you are is stated here today. And I would ask my colleagues and my friends to give Mr. Pierre a round of applause. Teddy's life lesson is instructive for us all. He never stopped believing that the system that had failed him could also be the system that could save him. It takes the right blend of courage, commitment, and creativity to overcome the sorts of challenges that Mr. Pierre had to endure. We would all do well, as I said, to emulate him and to copy him. Indeed, if we are to be successful at the significant challenges that we face in this district, we too must be equally committed, creative, and courageous. Accordingly, I have reserved my last thanks for my colleagues, who I think over the last year have been committed, creative, and courageous. They've been committed to being good fiscal stewards, committed to being agents of accountability. And they have also, I think, in ways that other boards cannot accept this kind of characterization, have been creatively collaborative in their efforts. They have always been open to new ways of governing this struggling district. And for that, I hope this community is eternally thankful. Thank you again for being so creative and courageous this past year. Last year, we made a whole host of decisions that were deliberative yet decisive. This year, I will tell you, will be no... This year, I will tell you, will be no different. In fact, today, I'm here to commit to you all that I will be more collaborative, more creative, and equally as courageous. God bless you, and thank you. All right, so the clerk is telling me, we gotta move it along. And our next item on the agenda is we have to approve resolutions, what was it? Three... 437 to 402, 442? Yeah, I see. Thank you very much, Commissioner Powell. We have to approve resolutions 437. I'm gonna do it in, can I get a motion to approve these in bulk?
Yes, motion, move it.
Second.
Oh, so 447 should be 448? 402 should be 448? All right. All right, does everybody, does everybody have that organization meeting? So it should be corrected, instead of saying 402, it should say 448. Standard work day and reporting resolution. Everybody see that? All right, so I think Commissioner Evans has moved to consider resolutions 4 through 7 to 448 as a bulk.
Yes, sir.
It's been moved and seconded by Vice President Elliott. Any debate or conversation or questions regarding those resolutions?
Call it.
Question has been called. All those in favor of resolutions 437 to 448, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Those resolutions are passed. Then, Madam Clerk, I think the only other business that we have to conduct is the... Oh, that's right. What would we do without an excellent clerk?
Motion to...
We have to actually vote on that.
No.
Assignment of committee members altogether, and then convene individuals.
No, no, no. I think what we'll do is we'll adjourn this meeting. I think there's been a motion to adjourn, right?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
It's been seconded. All those in favor of adjourned this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we're going to convene five separate committee meetings. This is part of our protocol here. The bylaws require that the president convene each of the committee meetings first, and then the committee members vote on who shall be the chair. So we're gonna do that. I'm going to now convene a meeting of Board Governance and Development. And at that meeting are Elizabeth Hallmark, Jose Cruz, and Willa Powell. Can I get a motion to approve those members as commissioners, as members of the Board and Governance Development Committee?
Move it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by Vice President Elliott. All those in favor of the Board and Governance Committee being so constituted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right, so we now have a fully formed Board and Governance and Development Committee. You three members want to pick a chair?
I motion to nominate Elizabeth Hallmark being Chair.
Second.
All those in favor of Elizabeth Hallmark being appointed Chair of Board and Governance, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Ms. Hallmark, you are now Chair of Board and Governance. Let's give Ms. Hallmark a round of applause. I realize we're trying to run this meeting on a tight ship, but I did want to give every board chair, a committee chair, a brief opportunity to say what their goals were. I know nobody's probably prepared for this, but Liz, do you want to say a few words?
My goals are going to be on board development, improving the relationship and communication between board members, and continuing best practices between our relationship and the superintendent.
All right, so Liz, you have to adjourn that meeting for us. Just ask for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
All right. Then just say, "all those in favor, say aye."
Aye.
And that meeting has been adjourned. Nice job, Liz. All right, we're on a roll.
Adjourn the meeting, that's always good.
That was a record time, too.
I'm happy about that.
All right, I'm now going to convene a meeting of the Community and Intergovernmental Relations. It is proposed that Mary Adams, Elizabeth Hallmark, and Cynthia Elliott be members of that committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Commissioner Adams?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Elliott, Vice President Elliott, as Chair of the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
I second that nomination.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Vice President Elliott, you are now, once again, Chair of Community and Intergovernmental Relations.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know you're just asking about, for the chair to talk about goals. We will continue the work that we've been doing on the Intergovernmental Relations Committee with regard to developing a communication strategy, which entails, how do we effectively communicate the issues that are going on within the Rochester City School District? How do we get data out to our families, such that as we communicate this data, the decision-making ability for our families increase? For example, when I did the welcoming for the summer school graduation, and I gave some data, for example, "did you know that there are some kids who know 30 million more words than others by the age of three?" They were there in silence. And so what that said to me was that our community is hungry for the information. So that if we could provide them the information, no doubt, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, I think that we will see some different kinds of decisions that would improve student achievement for our community. So the committee is looking forward to doing that kind of work, as well as being more in touch with the various legislative bodies, working on the state level, working with our city government, the FNP, for example, and with the three-on-three-on-three with city hall and with the County of Monroe, Mr. President. Thank you.
So you're gonna adjourn that meeting, and we just gonna...
Oh, well, we could just go on. Let me have a motion to adjourn. Liz, second.
A second.
Meeting adjourned.
All right, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, we're going to convene a meeting of Finance. This is a sort of a committee of the whole right now. And so what I propose as President, that Jose Cruz, Malik Evans, and Willa Powell be members of that Finance Committee. All those in favor of the committee being so constituted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right, so now that I've convened this meeting, I need you all, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Evans, and Commissioner Powell, to select a chair.
I nominate Jose Cruz.
Second.
All those in favor of Commissioner Cruz being elected Finance Chair, say aye.
Aye.
It is so ordered. Commissioner Cruz?
Very briefly, thank you very much for the honor to, again, chair the Finance Committee. It's probably, and amongst all the things that we do, one of the most important committees that we have. And this upcoming next few months, as we put yet another budget together, I look forward to working with everybody to do that, making sure that we maximize whatever resources we can, make sure that we put them back into the classroom. And also that the, you know, I look forward to working with the committee to making sure that the board in itself also has its priorities, and are able to sort of input that into the process as well. Exactly the number of things that we want to take a look at. I want to make sure that those things are in there as well. And then ultimately to make sure it's a budget that's simplistic, because it is a very complex situation, but that it's easy enough for any person to be able in this district to understand what we're trying to do. And the easier we make it, I think the better it's going to be for everybody. So transparency is, in the words of others who said it, but transparency and simplicity and try to break down the complexity of the budget, I think is something that we're going to be striving for this coming year. So thank you very much, and thank you for the honor to, again, chair of the committee. That being said, a motion that we adjourn the committee.
Move it.
Second.
All right, that meeting has been adjourned. I'm going to convene a meeting of the Policy and Development and Review Committee. I propose that Mary Adams, Jose Cruz, and Willa Powell be members of that committee. All those in favor of that committee being constituted in that matter, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, I need those four members to identify a chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Powell to chair the Policy Committee.
All those in favor of Commissioner Powell being Chair of Policy Development and Review, say aye.
Aye.
It's all yours, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. My goals for this year, the policy manual as we know it today was, came together and was passed only once, in August 1998. First and the last time. So just as, you know, your house can be clean if you, you know, do your regular weekly cleaning, every now and again, you have to go from attic to basement, scrub the baseboards, and do it all over again. So I would like to, before the year is out, produce for the board to vote on a full and complete new version of the policy manual, most of which will remain the same, but we'll have had our eyes on the whole thing. And Mary, thank you. Welcome to the committee. I look forward to working with you. At this time, I'd like to, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Adjourned.
All right, that meeting is adjourned. Not finally, second to last, the Excellent Student Achievement Committee. As committee as a whole, I'd ask that you all entertain my nominations to the committee, that being Vice President Elliott, Commissioner Evans, and Commissioner Hallmark. Any, all those in favor of that slate, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? The ayes have it. Now I need those members to select a chair.
Mr. President, I'd like to select Malik Evans as Chair of the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee. I do that with great honors. He has done a great job in chairing that committee and bringing the district to this committee to talk about a lot of the educational issues that have faced our students. And so I'd like to, I make the motion to continue with him as Chair, Mr. President.
What's the committee's reasoning on this? You want to support that nomination?
Yes.
She's learning.
Can we get a vote on that?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's official. Commissioner Evans, you are, once again, Chair of Excellence Student Achieve.
Thank you. My first goal is to make sure that the meetings don't go longer than three hours. No. Those meetings go a long time. But I want to thank the committee for nominating me again. Obviously, I'll be brief. Three big areas that we look at, and I call them the three entry points. We want to continue to get feedback on our pre-K area. We know that if students are not do better, if they enroll in pre-K, that ultimately helps our graduation rate in a long way. So we continue to focus on getting feedback, information on our pre-K to make sure that we continue to keep that high class. There were some changes that were made to pre-K, so we'll continue to track those changes this year. Reading by third grade, we have actually a reading by third grade department, so we want to continue to get updates to make sure that everything is going well there. And also, I call it nine-five-one. We know that in ninth grade, if a student has five credits and at least one reading diploma, their chances of graduating greatly increase. So in order to really see what's happening with our graduation rate, we really have to look at those three important entry points, to see what's going on with that. And this committee is just so meaty with all of the things that we look at, from graduation rates to programs to consultants that we use. Those are all areas that we will be looking for, looking forward to working on this coming year. And I invite everyone to come to those meetings, because they're always very instructive. We'll miss you, Commissioner Adams, but I'm happy to have Commissioner Hallmark joining us on the committee this year. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee meeting. Second? All those in favor, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right, that meeting has been successfully convened and adjourned. We'll move to our last committee, which is the Audit Committee. There is a slate of candidates, nominations for that committee that would include Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Vice President Elliott, and Commissioner Evans. All those in favor of that slate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, so now I need those three commissioners to select a chair.
I will nominate Commissioner Adams. I always say this is one of my favorite committees, because when we first started the Audit Committee, this is probably one of the most important committees, because it keeps us out of trouble. And I want to nominate Commissioner Adams as Chair as Audit Committee.
I second that nomination.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Adams?
Well, very briefly, in terms of goals, I would like to continue to not take advantage of, but to recognize and tap into the really remarkable resource that we have in terms of our extremely capable Auditor General and the entire audit staff. These are people who go far beyond compliance and, you know, number crunching and keeping us out of trouble, as Commissioner Evans just said, but really have incredible, excuse me, insight, working with, you know, very high integrity and helping us to feed back into the institution so that we can truly improve. So it goes beyond compliance, number crunching, to really add value. And so my goal is to continue to do that work and to do it in the best way that we can. I do want to say that, as we always do at the organizational meeting, I'm going to ask the Audit Committee to stay for a very brief meeting so that we can review our charter, and that won't take long. President White, I don't know if there's other business, if I should adjourn that, or if I should ask to hold on adjourned the Audit Committee meeting and ask our members to stay.
No, no, no. I think once I say when our next meeting is, we're done here, so...
So I'll adjourn it. I'll recess it.
Yeah, you can recess. Oh, I see.
Motion to recess.
So move.
All right, so that concludes our business. I want to say what I think a number of colleagues have said, but it cannot be said enough. For all the staff out there, those that are still here, those that are watching, we realize this is not going to happen without you all. Many are probably taking the night off. Typically, these seats are full, not with citizens, but with staff members. And I think I can say on behalf of the entire board that we really appreciate the work that you do. And we are blessed and fortunate to be able to serve as your officers for this district. And we believe, fervently believe, that this year will be a year that we will all look back and say, "that is the year that the Rochester City School District pivoted, that we took a different direction, that everybody will be able to look back and say, 'this was the year that the Rochester City School District became a transformative district,'" setting the way, showing the way for other urban districts throughout this country. And let me just, I'll have this one more personal privilege. Teddy, it's good to see you, and I look forward to seeing you much more in the future. Have a good 2016. Good night, everybody. A motion to adjourn?
So move.
Been moved and adjourned. Good night, everybody.